Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Evelyn Turner-Pugh, Mayor Pro Tem and District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. John House, Post 10 at Large Counselor. Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council.
Good evening and welcome to the May 7th meeting, proclamation, resolution meeting for Governor Columbus City Council. Mayor Skip Henderson is not with us this afternoon. He had another engagement. So you will be hearing from me. And Mayor Pro Tem Evelyn Turner-Pugh. Now welcome you all to our council chambers. As we always start off with prayer. Is Pastor Norman Hartman in the building yet?
Mayor Pro Tem. I see a pastor in the audience who is ready. And that would be Pastor Outley. Our invocation.
Let us bow our heads. Father God, we thank you so much for this day. We thank you for our city. We thank you for the citizens right now. And we ask that you bless us and keep us and let your face shine upon us, oh God. We can do nothing without you, Father. So we thank you for an opportunity to pray. We thank you for an opportunity to praise your name yet another day. For this is the day that the Lord has made. And we shall rejoice and be glad in it. God, our footsteps right now. This is our prayer. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Reverend Outley.
Pastor Outley. What church?
I am the pastor of Abundant Life Full Gospel Outreach Church, 6001 Buna Vista Road, Columbus, Georgia. Twenty-two years.
And she's very involved in the community. Next we have our pledge done by the Columbus Figure Skating Academy. You all come forth.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under one, indivisible, with liberty
And if you will give us your name.
I am nine years old and my name is Cambry Mitchell.
Speak into the mic.
I am nine. I am nine years old. I am nine years old and my name is Cambry Mitchell.
Hi, I'm Ashley Fields and I am 13 and I have been skating since I was eight years old. And I went to Regionals last year and I'm going back again this year with some other people from our club.
Hello, my name is Sarah Hall and I have been skating for two years. And I love the art and all that.
Hello, my name is Paisley. I love to skate with all my other friends.
Hi, my name is Ty. I've been skating for about 10 months. And my favorite part about skating is probably the aftermath because when, once you've finished with your program after skating, you can wind up getting a medal and you just feel proud about yourself.
Hello, my name is Loki and I'm nine years old. And this year I'm going to Regionals.
Hi, my name is Hunter Hathaway. And this year I'm going to Regionals. And I've been skating for three years ever since I was six years old.
Let's give him another hand. If there are any supporters out there and parents, if you would please stand. And if you all will come around and shake your hand. Again, we said thank you for being with us today and Next we have Mr. Dan Gilbert, White Water Express.
How are y'all doing? I am Dan Gilbert, President of White Water Express. And I want to thank you for allowing me to bring a message from the river to the council. Thanks to the council. We have a lot of great things going on this summer. One of the things that is most fun is we have an adventure camp for kids. It's age seven to 12. And what we do is we bring 50 children from Columbus into the river and we teach them how to have fun on the river and how to do it safely. And we opened registration five days ago. We still have space available. So I want y'all to know about that. Last year, people always ask us about numbers on the river. And there's no place that is better to talk about numbers than with y'all. So we had, last year we had over 50,000 people come to the river and they either ziplined over the river or they went down the river. Now interestingly, 75% of those people drove over 50 miles to get here. So that means they came from places like Dothan and Noonan and Atlanta and Tallahassee. The great story that goes with that is what those people do when they get here is they spend money. And they buy food, they buy gas, they buy hotel rooms. Last year, we tried our guests last year and they purchased over 4,000 hotel rooms over 2018 season. Now what that means, that's great. I mean, what that means is, if nothing else, a hundred, well over $100,000 went to CVB. You know, there's great rewards. And what we've also tracked, the city has tracked, is from the opening of White Water in 2013 till a couple of years ago, what happened in Uptown is revenues, gross revenues went up 47%. So I think many cities visit, including this past weekend, many cities come visit our town and just to find out how to do this in their home. And it's very difficult, but their eyes are wide open when we give them figures like that. Now, also interesting, I said 75% drove over 50 miles. What about the other 25%? I think the impact has been just as dramatic on the local citizens. So 25% of those that go rafting and ziplining with us are from right here in Columbus. And what we have seen is overall in Columbus, I think what that has done is there's a pride in everybody in Columbus as to what's going on. When people in Columbus go to the river and see that somebody has driven from Tallahassee and is a tourist that has come to our city to enjoy it, it's a really good thing. I really like that. And I think that whether you work for the city, whether you work for Aflac or TESUS, anywhere in town, the value that you put in where you live is a very important thing. And I think the river has added to that certainly. Interestingly too, we are very diverse on the river. We're diverse in ethnicity, we're diverse in economic background. And I think that's important. If you come down and watch what's going on, you'll see rafters and zippers, you'll see joggers, you'll see walkers, you'll see just people, some people will come down, I mean, I've seen elderly people come down and bring a lunch and sit on the side of the river and watch those crazy people going down the rapids. I don't think they're crazy. I think everybody should do this. So let me tell you about one thing that happened this weekend. So this weekend we had the Trail Summit here in Columbus. And we had a company, REI, many of y'all have probably heard about that. That's one of the largest retail, outdoor retail companies in the country. So they sent a crew down to go down the river and they didn't tell us about it ahead of time. They just wanted to kind of sneak in and go. They go on rivers all over the country. We know we have great white water down here. But they came in and they, after the trip, they got back with me and asked me to come in for a meeting and they said this was the best experience they'd ever had on any river in the country on white water, which kind of blew me away. I thought this was great stuff. REI, I love hearing that from big companies. REI is going to set up trips from Chattanooga, Asheville, Atlanta to bring buses down here so they can experience the same thing. So it's good news. Now, this is Employee Appreciation Week coming up. And I think one great way to, you know, employees can come down to the river and just have a lunch on the side of the river. If they do it together, that's a team building enterprise just in itself, getting outside of the office and engaging with their fellow workers. What we'd like to do for the rest of the year, and hopefully y'all can get this out through your media, is we'd like to offer all city employees a half price on whatever they're doing. If they go ziplining or rafting, it's half price for all employees the rest of the year. Because I think it is, it's especially nice and a real team builder when you go with your coworkers and you get in a raft, you really find out a lot more about who you're working with. So again, I'd like to thank you and y'all come on down to the river and have fun this summer. Thank you very much.
Mr. Gilbert. Mr. Gilbert. I wanted to say thank you for that invitation. Councilor Thomas and I were talking last week. And you all need some cheerleaders down there while the people are going down the raft.
We do.
So Councilor Thomas and I are going to be the cheerleaders.
Okay, I've got some talking to do to get you inside the boat. I can tell that. We love cheerleaders on the river.
We will be cheerleaders. We will make the rafting.
That's right. Just come in, it's half price, any day. That'd be great. We want to see them too. Thanks very much.
Next we have our proclamations with our peer awards. And I will be doing those. And I'll ask Ms. Sandra Day, Ms. Sandra Chandler to come forth. Ms. Sandra Chandler, Carmen Hood, Cap Het, Deanna Franks, and Krista Farley. Our first award. Our first award is for Ms. Sandra Chandler. And if I can, will I call your name for your step out phone? That's it. Whereas employees of the Columbus Consolidated Government are its most valuable assets. And whereas it is important to recognize the various achievements of these employees, including the peer award. And whereas the Promoting Employee Excellence through Recognition Award recognizes employees who make constant contributions to the organizations through outstanding job performance, who set an example of outstanding quality management, teamwork, and customer service, who significantly enhance the work environment by contributing to the personal well-being of their coworkers and their families. And whereas Ms. Sandra Chandler, an employee of the Finance Department, has been selected as the recipient for the first quarter of 2019. And whereas all citizens of Columbus and employees of the Columbus Consolidated Government are urged to recognize and appreciate the contributions made to the public good by its outstanding employees. And therefore Skip Behind is Mayor Columbus, Georgia, here to proclaim Tuesday, May 7, 2019, Ms. Sandra Chandler Day And you can tell us whatever you want to tell us.
Well, this is my 15th year with the city. And I've stayed in the Finance Department between purchasing and accounting. And I hope to retire with the city one day. My husband is here, Jeff.
Want to stand up, Jeff? There we go.
Our next awardee is Carmen Hood. And the awards all read the same from the peer awards. So what I wanted to do, so that people can know something about you, if you all would take a few minutes and tell us something if you want the city and your coworkers to know that you don't know.
Sure, I can do that. Good evening, everyone at the council. I am Carmen D. Hood. I have been with the CCG family for about five years, but I've been working in the Board of Assessors office for about two years. Fun fact about myself, I actually was an extra in the movie Redeemed that was filmed here in Columbus. Great time with the Mans and Mackey project that was there. So that was very rewarding and fun. I'm just a wonderful person and I just look forward to continue. And I just look forward to continue to work with the city. Thank you all for the opportunity.
Congratulations on your day.
That was cool.
You know why she was an extra? Our next awardee is Cap Het.
Hey, good evening. My name is Cap Het. I'm an investigator with the DA's office. I've been there just over 17 years, but in a roundabout way, I've been there 23 or 24 actually. I'd just like to say thank you to the council, Ms. Mayor Pro Tem, my coworkers. It really is, it sounds cliche of course, but it's a team effort on the third floor and I'm just happy to be a part of it. I'd also like to say thank you to Ms. Sunny Daly for nominating me. I'm honored, I appreciate it. Thank you.
You have any? Do you have any family members here? And I forgot to ask Carmen. Is Carmen still here? I didn't know she had any family members here with her. Our next awardee is going to be Deanna Franks.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Deanna Franks. I started my career with the city of Columbus in 2007. I actually started with the police department here. I did a lateral transfer in 2010 to the marshal's office. So the bulk of my career has been as a deputy marshal. The job I do is not individualized at all. It is a group effort. I'm very humbled and elated to be recognized, but I could not have that opportunity without the group I work with. A wonderful group of men and women. I am also a very proud mother of two teenage girls, which is a task in itself. But I'm very thankful to be here, very proud to be employed with the city of Columbus as well. It's been a good run so far. And just thank you. And I am being supported by some of the deputies I have. Chief Moore, Lieutenant Bowers, Sergeant Roland, Corporal Cox, and also Deputy Larry Marshall.
If they would all stand, please. Our next awardee is Ms. Crystal Farley.
Okay, so shout.
Yeah, talk, you just talk first.
Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Crystal Farley. I am the city manager's executive assistant. I've been with Mr. Hughley for about four years, it'll be five in December. I'm very honored to be led by his leadership and to be a public servant here in Columbus, Georgia. It brings me joy to see the smiles on the faces of all of our citizens here. It brings me joy to be, to bring happiness to those. So I love what I do. I'm very thankful for the person who submitted me for this award. I do a lot of work with the Therapeutic Recreational Center that we talked about today in our budget review. So let's, you know, really think about that one. But I love those kids over there. So I really appreciate all of them and thank you all for everything that you do.
Have been around here with you.
Yes, my mother is here, my two kids Zoe and Miles, and my partner Jeremy is here as well.
Mayor Pro Tem, I just want to acknowledge my executive assistant, Krista Farley. She is one of our shining stars, one of the millennials in the organization. And I'm proud of her and the work that she does.
Thanks for what you do.
And now if Ms. Francesca Dai will come forth, please. And this one reads, whereas the employees of the Columbus Consolidated Government are its most valuable assets. Whereas it is important to recognize the various achievements of employees, including the 2018 Peer of the Year Award. Whereas the Promoting Employee Excellence through Recognition Award recognizes employees who make constant contributions to the organizations through outstanding job performance, who set an example of outstanding quality management, teamwork, and our customer service, and who significantly enhance the work environment by contributing to the personal well-being of their coworkers and their families and/or their families. Whereas Francesca Dai, an employee of the Columbus Consolidated Government Finance Department, has been selected as the recipient for the 2018 Peer of the Year, the 2018 Award. And whereas all citizens and employees are encouraged to recognize and appreciate the contributions she has made to the public good by being an outstanding employee. And so it is also your day too. You have someone here with you? You'd like to?
Yes, I have my family here. My mother, Deborah Zimmerman. Andre is my husband. My youngest son, Kobe. My dad, Robert. And my oldest son, Andre. My daughter couldn't be here, she had a soccer game. So I'm missing that right now. And I've been working with CCG for 12 years. I just recently transitioned from the Finance Department to working as the payroll coordinator. And now I'm working as the finance manager at the Trade Center. I also want to acknowledge my finance family here. Pam Hives and Angelica, Andrea, Rondo's in the back. I also want to recognize Skip Hansberger. I also want to recognize Skip Hansberger, my current assistant director at the Trade Center. And I just want to thank everyone who was involved and voted me for the Peer of the Year Award. I only remember one name, Loretta Stewart, and I really want to thank her for voting for me.
Congratulations. Very proud of you.
Our next two awards, the Individual Excellence Award. Mr. Keith Benefield. I can't figure out how I want to say this. Keep repeating myself. What I want to say, Mr. Benefield is an employee of Columbus Public Works Department, and he is selected as recipient for the first quarter, and this is the individual, the Individual Excellence Award. And in this award, they also show outstanding service both to the fellow employees and to their families, too. And the Individual Excellence Award is the highest form of recognition given an employee of Columbus Consolidated Government. So, it's not something to be taken lightly. When you see these people getting these awards each month and each quarter or each year, it's not something that everybody gets. So, we have to really appreciate our employees who give service, good service to us. And they don't, they don't just get their award. They have to nominate it. They nominate it by their coworkers and others in the organization, so it's something you can be real proud of, something you can hold your hand up real high about. And would you like to tell us something else about you?
Well, I've been with the city for twenty-seven years, public works, streets, heavy equipment division. I'd like to thank Michelle Brown-Mayer for nominating me. It's a true honor that she could do that, and that's about it.
You have anybody here with you?
I've got my wife, Kim.
Thank you. If you'll come around, we shake your hand. Our next award goes to Ms. Paula Carter. This is Ms. Carter. Would you like to tell us about you?
Oh, there's not much to tell. I am the training captain with Columbus Fire and EMS. I've been with the city for almost thirty-two years. I'm currently, my role now is EMS program director for our paramedic program, and just busy making new paramedics, and so we'll have them for the citizens of Columbus, and I appreciate this honor. You know, people say that I'm not nervous, but I am nervous when I get up and talk. I just hide it well, I guess, but, um, but thank you for this honor. This is truly a surprise.
Well, good. We thank you for all the service you do.
Great.
You have anybody here with you?
Uh, yes, I have my chief, Jeff Meyer, my assistant chief, Robert Futrell, deputy chief, Greg Lane, and then I have my partner, Jenny Weatherby, in the back.
Chief, would you like to say something?
No, no, but I can tell you Captain Carter is a wonderful employee, very deserving of this recognition and this award, and I don't know what I would do, or what the department or the city would do, without her very valuable employee. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
And she is the Individual Excellence of the Year awardee. Our next proclamation will be done by Councilor Judith Thomas.
Our next proclamation is for Dante Johnson. Is Dante here tonight? Come up to the, to the mic, to the podium. I want you guys to pay special attention to what we're going to say about Dante. Dante Johnson, now a freshman at Calvary Christian School, started playing soccer in Fort Campbell, Kentucky at just six years old. When his family moved to Columbus in two thousand and twelve, he continued playing, first at Fort Benning and then with Columbus Youth Soccer Club, Y-C-Y-S-C. And whereas in two thousand and fifteen, Dante qualified for the Olympic Development Program, providing access to high-level coaching and regional competitions. The next year, he began playing for the Fort Middle School and was named MVP all three years. And whereas all Dante's dreams seemed to be coming to fruition when disaster struck this fall. In September, he started experiencing issues with his right leg, and a high fever soon followed. He was admitted to the hospital and diagnosed with a life-threatening MRSA, also called a staph infection, in his right tibia, knee, and bloodstream. And whereas Dante spent more than two weeks in the hospital undergoing surgery three times in attempts to eradicate the infection from his bone, he spent two more months recovering at home, all the while missing out on his beloved soccer practices and games, wondering if he would ever play again. Whereas once he won the battle against the infection, Dante immediately set his sights back on soccer. He worked hard through intense physical rehabilitation and fought his way back to the field for both Calvary Christian and the Region Three ODP team. And whereas all Dante's hard work paid off, earning him a coveted invitation to train in Barcelona beginning March the twenty-fourth. There, he played against some of the top youth teams of Spain, proudly representing his home club, C-Y-S-C, Birmingham United Soccer Association, the state of Georgia, and Region Three ODP. And whereas, including games in Costa Rica, Dante now has played in six international games, representing the United States Region Three. And whereas, and I think this may be an understatement, soccer is his greatest passion and line. Now therefore, Skip Henderson, mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, May the second, two thousand and nineteen, as Dante Johnson Day. Congratulations.
Dante, do you have any family members here?
Uh, yes, ma'am. I have my mom here with me, and one of my coaches, and also his son, David Miles. And I would like to thank my family and friends for all the support they show me all the time. It really means a lot to me.
I want your mom and the family to come up.
Congratulations. Very proud of you. Awesome, awesome.
I just want to say you're a truly blessed individual, and thank you for all you've done to help recognize Columbus, but for yourself. Thank you, Mama. Here's another example. When you have a disability or have an illness, you can let it stop you if you want to, but you don't have to. Use it to go higher. Our next award proclamation will be done by Councilor Barnes. Educational Innovation Day.
Yes, it's my pleasure to read this proclamation with individuals come forward. I'm looking at one I've known for such a long time, friend of mine, very dedicated to youth, and it is so good to see him every time come up here with these young folks. And this proclamation reads thusly, it says, whereas the Columbus Phoenix City Inventors Association, CPC, is a not-for-profit educational organization dedicated to the education of individuals interested in inventing. And whereas the purpose of Columbus Phoenix City Investors Association is to create awareness of creating new products for the marketplace through the invention process and to help young people and adults become future entrepreneurs. And whereas the Columbus Phoenix City Inventors Association has been in place since two thousand and ten and continues to motivate students to become innovative and creative in producing products that will improve the way we do things in our everyday lives. And whereas the Columbus Phoenix City Inventors Association collaborated with Columbus State University and the Muskogee County School District to judge students during the Columbus Regional Science and Engineering Fair held in January twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen. And whereas middle and high school students presented projects that they created for the fair. And whereas two student winners were given a free membership to Columbus Phoenix City Inventors Association. And whereas the mayor and council of Columbus, Georgia, recognize the important relationship among the Board of Education, Columbus State University, and CPC, and join the citizens of Columbus, Georgia in extending congratulations to the student winners, please excuse me if I don't pronounce your names correctly. It's Yashas Reddy and Ruth Reeves Reddy. Therefore, the Honorable Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, BJ Skip Henderson III, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, May the seventh, two thousand and nineteen, as Education and Innovation Day in the City of Columbus, Georgia.
Well, good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, council members.
Good evening.
It's a pleasure to be here again this year. As you know, we bring to you innovative and really educated and smart youngsters in our school system. Today, I bring you two of our students, their projects, and they'll be able to give their talk about their project. But as you know, we look at over a hundred projects every year, and we choose two, sometimes three, student winners for the excellent product. Now, this particular product, as they'll explain, has worldwide potential. And we look at those products because if they further those products, next thing you know, you'll have some millionaires standing right in front of you here, okay? So, without further ado, I'm going to let them come up, tell you the school that they're from, what grade they're in, and of course, the pronunciation of their names.
Hello, city council. My name is Ruthish Reddy. I'm in the eighth grade, and this is my brother, Yashas Reddy. He's from the seventh grade. We're both from Blackman Road Middle School. We first want to thank our parents, our teachers, and Dr. Turner for giving us this opportunity to stand before here and talk to you all. Without them, none of, none of us would be here. Our project is about casein, which is a biodegradable substance, and we're trying to figure out if we can be used as a replacement for plastic.
Plastic in the environment as we dispose it is harmful to the environment. Plastic in the environment is harmful because we use the most of it not in a proper manner. Since it gets into the ecosystem, animals can choke and down it since of its pollutants from the acid rain.
Also, animals that we use, we depend on food, like cows and pigs, will eat some of it because it might end up in their farms from rain and rivers. They eat it, they have it inside the systems when we eat it. And when we eat those animals, we can get sick and have life-threatening ailments like cancer and other, and like cardiac arrest.
All this, we can, we can further experimentate. For all this, we can help our environment.
All right. I'm going to be real quick because they have another engagement after this. They're going to be recognized at another function. But as you know, from what he was saying, his project or their project has worldwide potential. So, I hope they continue working with this project because, as you know, trying to get rid of plastics in our environment makes a big, big difference. And I'm going to try to push them to keep going, and like I said, the million dollars will be a big, big incentive. So, with that, I want to thank you and appreciate you allowing us to come here today.
They have a family. Do they have any family members here?
Thank you so much.
Just stand up.
Yeah, his family is here.
Miss, stand up.
And doing something about plastics would help our landfill. Our next proclamation will be done by Councilor Unnie Woodson. Building Safety Month.
Is anybody here? Oh. Tony, yeah.
Good afternoon. Proclamation reads, whereas the West Central Inspector Association is committed to the growth and strength of our city, which depends on the safety and economic value of homes, building an inner structure that serves our citizens both in everyday life and in time of natural disaster. Whereas, our confidence in the structure of the buildings and making up our community is achieved... and making up our community is achieved through the devotion of the guardian angels, builder safety, and five prevention officers, architectural engineers, builders, trade people, designers, and professional laborers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safety of construction of buildings. And whereas, these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a U.S.-based organization that brings together local, state, and federal officers that are experts in building environment to create an interconnected highest-quality code to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and worship, and play. Whereas, Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community, largely unknown guardians of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, effective, and livable buildings that are in essence to keeping America great. And whereas, no codes, no confidence, the theme of Building Safety Month 2019 encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of safety in construction, fire prevention, disaster, and new technology in the construction industry. Building Safety Month 2019 encourages appropriate steps everyone can take to ensure safety of our building environment, recognize that the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies has saved lives and protect homes and businesses. Whereas, each year, in observation of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety and economy investments in homes and the community, and to acknowledge the essence of service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, Fire Prevention Bureau, federal agency, and Protection of Life and Property. Now, therefore, I, B.J. Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2017 as Builder Safety Month. In witness whereof, I have on to pond, set my hand and seal of the official seal of Columbus, Georgia, to be fixed this first day of May 2019. Congratulations and thank you.
Well, thank you. Ideally, people see us typically, it's on the wrong side. They see us what we do wrong, and we're coming out to fix things that we're dealing with out in the field. But Building Safety Month, we try to be a little bit more proactive and show things that we're doing positively. Week one is the Disaster Readiness Program. And this year, normally, we donate it to our local fire department, but this year, we're going to donate $1,000 to Ellisley Volunteer Fire Department due to the issues and storms that they were dealing with. This coming week, this coming Friday, we're doing a Career and Design Day. So we're going to actually, we're working with the kids from Jordan Vocational High School. They're going to ride around with us. We're going to take them to some commercial sites, then we're going to take them to some residential sites so they get to see construction hands-on as opposed to just in their office. The next week, we have our golf tournament. We've given over $25,000 in scholarships since the organization's been around since 1992, individuals in the code field and their family members to have them the opportunity to go to college. The fourth week, we deal with communities. So ideally, we're picking a day. We're going to hang out at Home Depot on a Saturday morning. So we have a lot of home builders and people who have questions about, do I need a permit? What's this for? What can I do and what can I not do? So we're going to hang out there for a few hours and kind of let them know what's going on. And then last week, we're doing innovations in building safety. So we have a few things under wraps. We're not going to present them quite yet, but we've got a few things we're looking at to move forward with designs and technology, taking advantage of that.
And who are you?
Oh. I'm John Henderson, the president of the West Georgia Inspectors Association, also the director of inspectors and codes. Obviously, I'm the one who's usually up here, but I wanted my guys to come in because they're just as important, and they're the ones that make me look good every day. So, thank you.
You want to introduce them?
Oh, all right. Well, we have Chuck, he's one of my, Chuck LePlace, he's one of my building inspectors. I have Philip Smith here, he's one of my property maintenance inspectors. I have Bobby Fulanis here, that does my plumbing and mechanical, and also Joseph Sturkin here for property maintenance.
Awesome. Congratulations, that was great. Thank you so much for your work today. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for your work today. Awesome, thank you.
Our next proclamation is Councilor Thomas, and Hermanda Demines Henderson Day.
Hello and welcome to the podium. It's a pleasure to be able to read this proclamation for you this evening. Whereas, Hermanda Demines Henderson was born in Louisville, Kentucky, and moved to Columbus, Georgia at the age of 17 with her military family. And whereas, Hermanda worked with the city of Columbus as a program specialist three, then transitioned onto the state of Georgia as a juvenile probation officer. She is now the Southern Regional Volunteer Coordinator with the Office of Victim and Volunteer Services for the Department of Juvenile Justice. And whereas, during her career, she obtained her bachelor's in criminal justice administration and master's degree in global and homeland security with the University of Phoenix. And whereas, Hermanda has, excuse me, has had an innovative and, has an innovative and bright mind when it comes to creating programs that our youth in our community can benefit from on a wide range. She collaborated with the team to help bring the first teen job fair to Columbus, Georgia, at Carver High School. This event had over 150 teen participants with over 20 job vendors. And whereas, Hermanda recently was responsible for planning and hosting #Let'sTalkAboutIt, a teen dating violence forum on February 21st, 2019, at Carver High School for all local area teens and caregivers. Over 150 youth and parents came out to participate in the group discussion and breakout sessions. Fifteen local community organizations came to provide additional resource information to help better their knowledge. Youth and parents were provided a safe and open forum to discuss and ask tough questions and concerns surrounding teen dating violence in our community. And whereas, Hermanda gives back and participates in the local community of Columbus. She is currently PTO President of Forest Road Elementary School, and regularly speaks at local area schools on career days to educate students about her roles as a juvenile probation officer and a regional volunteer coordinator for the Department of Juvenile Justice. Hermanda provides them with information to help motivate the youth to make wise choices and become productive and law-abiding citizens. And whereas, Hermanda Demines Henderson prides herself on providing youth and family in the community with quality programs and resources on important issues. When she isn't in the community or implementing programs, she loves being at home to spend time with her family and being a cheerleader for her kids, either, and either dance with the girls or whichever sport her son is participating in. Now therefore, Skip Henderson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, May the 7th, 2019, as Hermanda Demines Henderson Day. Congratulations.
Do you have an audience here with you?
Um, yes, I actually have my district director, Ms. Georgia Wimbush, for District Eight. And I also have my director of volunteer, victim and volunteer services, Ms. Devajah Coleman. She came all the way down from Atlanta. My kids are actually at the baseball field right now, so. Um, I just want to say thank you all. I'm humbled. I seriously cannot do half the stuff that I do without the support of the team that I work with and the team that I work with in the community. You're only as strong as the community that you serve. So, it's always fortunate that when these events are being planned and put on, when you reach out to local community partners and different things, and you let them know what your goal is, they don't even care where you're from. They just know, we have a job to do, let's get it done. How can we help? So, it's always a blessing to be able to still build those relationships and cultivate them to help serve the community as a whole. So, I am just grateful and blessed and thank you all.
Our next proclamation will be done by Councilor Barnes. And this is to Dr. Michael Hague Day.
Dr. Hague. It's my pleasure to read this proclamation for you, Dr. Hague. It reads thusly, it says, "Whereas, the U.S. has seen a 200% increase in prescription opioid overdose deaths since 2000." That's awesome. And whereas, 125 million Americans reported misusing prescription pain relievers in the past year. 80% of heroin users reported using prescription opioids for non-medical reasons before beginning to use heroin. And whereas, the state of Georgia had 549 opioid-specific drug overdoses in 2015, there are 29 counties in Georgia where drug overdose rates outpace the U.S. average, and Georgia ranks among top 11 states with most prescription opioid overdose deaths. And whereas, in 2016, the city's opioid prescription rate remained one of the highest in the state at 90.7 per 100 people. And whereas, the frontline law enforcement in Muskogee County does not have access to Narcan, the overdose reversal drug, for their own safety nor the safety of the community. And whereas, the Columbus Consolidated Government has been awarded $500,000 from the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration to ensure that all first responders are equipped with Narcan. And whereas, the mayor and city council recognized Dr. Michael Hague for participating in this project and aiding to ensure the program can purchase the Narcan needed to protect our law enforcement officers and to better aid first responders to save lives in our community and we continue to combat the opioid epidemic. Now therefore, the Honorable Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, B.H. Skip Henderson III, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, May the 7th, 2019, as Dr. Michael Hague Day in the city of Columbus, Georgia.
I'm a full-time ER physician at St. Francis Hospital and see this problem firsthand. And putting Narcan out on the streets to the first responders, I think is great. And I want to commend the Drug Court Dana and Karina, if you want to.
Oh, yeah.
For pushing this through and for the council to support them. So this is the frontline, this is right on the streets. And if somebody goes down, we have a way of reviving them now. So I think this is great, yeah. Thank you. My life, Dana, yeah.
Our next proclamation will be by Councilor Mimi Woodson and Drug Court Mike. And before they get started, I'd like to recognize Mrs. Skip Henderson.
Yes, the First Lady. Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm ready. I'm just giving him time. I didn't know what he was doing. Okay. Whereas, this year marks 30th anniversary for, let me start this. This year marks the 30th anniversary of Treatment Court. And whereas, there are now more than 3,000 treatment courts nationwide. And whereas, Treatment Courts have served 1.5 million individuals and are now recognized as the most successful justice system in innovation of nation's history. And whereas, Treatment Courts are now recognized as the most successful justice system innovation in our nation's history, saving an average of $6,000 for every individual they serve. And whereas, Treatment Courts significantly improve substance use disorder treatment, outcomeing, as well as substance reduction, addiction, and related crimes occurring at least expense than any other crime justice strategy. And whereas, Treatment Courts improve education, employment, housing, financial stability, promotes family reunification, reduces foster care placement, and increase rate of addiction mothers delivering babies who are fully drug-free. And whereas, Treatment Courts facilitate community-wide partnership brings together the public safety and public health professionals. And whereas, Treatment Courts demonstrate that when one person rises up to the substance use crime, we'll all rise. And whereas, the mayor and council recognizes judges, judges, staff members, prosecutor participants who make Drug Court work as a significant contribution the Drug Court has made and continues to make reducing drug usage and crime. Therefore, I, B.H. Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2017 as Drug Court Month. That was tongue-twister.
Good evening, council. My surname is Dana Solomon, the coordinator for the Adult Drug Court. Judge Godfrey regrets that she couldn't be with us tonight to accept the proclamation. But tonight, we're really excited. I'm really, I saw Susan Gallagher's face over there. And I'm really excited to get to announce to the council tonight. I came before you in December and asked for your permission to write yet another Sam Segren. And you said, "Go ahead, Dana." And we received word that the Adult Drug Court of Muskogee County has just been awarded a a $2 million funding from the state. We could have done it without Susan Gallagher. Susan Gallagher has been a big help to us, and I wouldn't be able to do it without her. So, I'm excited she's here tonight, and we're excited to do some really, really cool stuff with our program with this money, so, zero match.
And, and I just personally, I want to apologize. I said, um, 2000, I want to apologize. I said 2017, and it's 2019. Nobody caught it, but the mayor protest, Mimi, you said it wrong. But I personally want to say to you, thank you. Thank you for all that you're doing for our community, because without your help and your team, our first responders would not have, be equipped to be able to assist in this situation with the drug substance, which is a very big issue that's going on now, not only in our community, but nationwide. And people like yourself, I would call yourself an angel, angels like yourself that watch over other children and other people, you need to be very proud of yourself, and may God bless you and your family always for having that heart to think of others.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
I just want to say amen for what all that Mimi said, because the accountability court's on your shoulders. And I know how hard that you worked for this here, and it will save so many countless lives. But you want to know something? It wasn't for your efforts, our first responders out there on the front, they put themselves in jeopardy, and without having Narcan, it would be a serious situation. So, thank you again along with the doctor for all that you all did.
Thank you.
Our next proclamation is by Councilor Barnes, and this is Nurses Week.
Having nurses here, I know there should be a number of nurses here this evening. This is National Nurses Week. And I do see so many nurses coming here. Now, I'm going to read the proclamation, but then at the same time, when I finish it, I would like for every representative to say exactly what nursing organizations that you're from. It's so good to see you, all these nurses. I feel a vibe, a nursing vibe this evening. So, it's my pleasure to read this proclamation. It does read thusly, it says, "Whereas nearly 4 million registered nurses in the United States comprise our nation's largest healthcare profession. And whereas over 2,200 registered nurses serve our Columbus, Georgia, and Fort Benning community. And whereas the breadth of the registered nursing profession meets the different and emerging healthcare needs of the Chattahoochee Valley population in a wide range of settings. And whereas professional nursing has been demonstrated to be an indispensable component in the safety and quality of care of hospitalized patients. And whereas the demand for registered nurses' services is greater than ever because of the aging of the American population, the continuing expansion of life-sustaining technology, and the growth of home healthcare services. And whereas more qualified registered nurses will be needed in the future to meet the increasingly complex needs of healthcare consumers in our community. And whereas May 5th to 11th, 2019, is National Nurses Week with the theme Nurses Leading the Way. And whereas the Council of Columbus, Georgia encourages all residents of Columbus, Georgia and Fort Benning to honor those registered nurses who care for all of us, to celebrate registered nurses' accomplishments and efforts, as well as to show appreciation for the nation's registered nurses, not just during this week, but at every opportunity throughout the year." Now therefore, the Honorable Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, B.H. Skip Henderson III, does hereby proclaim the week of the May 5th to 11th, 2019 as Nurses Week. I'd like to say that. And Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes, sir.
And everyone here, we have a number of nursing organizations here. So, I would like for one representative of each of the nursing organizations to step forward, tell a little bit about, um, what your organization does. And I know, just from the beginning, I know, every organization here, because you are a nurse, we are advocates, bedside advocates, home advocates for patients, for people in this community. And so, um, y'all decide who wants to step up first to the plate and say who you are and a little bit about your organization.
Good afternoon, or good evening. I'm Gwendolyn McIntosh, and I'm with the Columbus, Georgia Metro Black Nurses Association. We're affiliated with the National Black Nurses Association, where Dr. Eric Williams is our president. Uh, with me is two of my members, or three of my members of our local organization. Uh, we work to provide scholarships to nursing students, and in fact, this past Saturday, we had an excellence award banquet, where we were able to provide scholarships to nursing students. We also recognize a citizen who's done great work here in the community, which was Dr. Cook. Uh, and our speaker was Alfie Jakes, who presented to us information about the need for medical care in Africa, and it was a really inspiring speech.
Very, very inspiring.
And as our chapter, we work with the Domestic Violence Roundtable. We also work with Michael's Promise, uh, and we do a lot with trying to train, uh, youth on bullying and also sexual inappropriate activities. So, we thank you. We thank you for what you do, and, uh, most of us are retired at this point, but still very involved in the community work.
And Gwen was my boss at, um, Gwen, don't step up a little bit. Nurses take care of nurses. And we were in a, um, West Central Regional Hospital, where you have, you had to provide not only mental health care.
Correct.
But physical care. So, Gwen, thank you for mentoring me.
Thanks.
And, uh, on the time that I was a floor nurse at, and staff nurse at, um.
West Central. Yeah, I stayed out there 23 years, well, 25 years and a few months as a nurse at, uh, West Central. And I appreciate everybody who worked hard to keep the hospital open, and it's still open today.
Yes, that's crucial.
Thank you.
You want to give the names of the nurses with you?
Tanish Buckner.
My name is Carol Armstrong.
Louise Cofield.
Now, who's representing Nurses Inc.?
Mayor Pro Tem, Council, thank you for the recognition. I'm Dolores Dolman, President of Nurses Inc. Nurses Inc. is a grassroots community organization of registered nurses. Our primary objective is nursing scholarships and community service. A few of our members this evening are doing blood pressure screening at the Midruck Terry Library, and we are discovering hypertension in the community and making the appropriate referrals. On this, uh, June 15th, we will be awarding six scholarships to nursing students in the Columbus area that are matriculating at accredited nursing schools, wherever they are, but they must be residents of the tri-city area. We're very proud of the job that we do in the community, and I'd like for the members to just come up, stand up here, and introduce themselves, they're hard-working nurses. I, uh, am proud to be a 55-year nurse veteran.
Look at that.
I'm not actively working, uh, receiving the paycheck, but I, I do the work and receive many, many rewards, uh, from the work that we do. Introduce yourselves, and thank you.
Hello, my name is Wanda Johnson, and I'm, um, Secretary and Chairman of the Scholarship Committee. And I just wanted to say that it's not too late. So, if you know of any nursing students, um, who would like to apply for this scholarship award, they still can do so. The number is 706-304-4561, and that will be getting them in contact with me, and I will let them know what it is that they need, and I'll email the information to them. So, it's not too late. Um, sometimes the students don't necessarily apply for what's out there, but we've got four scholarships that we'd like to award to some deserving students. Our speaker, uh, for the occasion will be Representative Carolyn Hughley.
What's the number again?
Any other members of Nurses Inc. with you here?
It's the 706-304-4561, and that will be directly to me.
Who's here from Khyat Pha? Anyone from Khyat Pha?
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Betty Karen Hudson, and I'm a member of Khyat Pha Sorority Nurses Inc. and the Medical Center, uh, Graduate Medical Center way back.
Good evening. My name is Sonya Tatum, one of the newest members of Nurses Inc., and it's been a very rewarding experience.
We have St. Francis Hospital here. No, no, I know.
Good evening. I'm Al George. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for St. Francis, and here to represent our over 500 nurses that, uh, work tirelessly every day to, uh, our mission of making communities healthier. And, uh, I tell you, the, the work that those ladies and gentlemen do, uh, day in and day out, frontline, taking care of our patients, is, is absolutely unbelievable. And, uh, as you know, there's a tremendous nerve shortage right now in our, in our, not only in our nation, but Georgia is one of the states that, that leads that. So, anything that we can do to try to get y'all back out of retirement. But in all seriousness, anything that we can do to, to guide our youth into the nursing industry would be a tremendous help, because there is a tremendous shortage right now. But, uh, I want to thank all the nurses for everything they do every day.
And please thank Dan Jones for all that, that St. Francis.
Yeah, he apologizes that he couldn't make it this evening, so.
I got his, I got his text message. And Carol Armstrong represents Fort Benning.
Yes. Good afternoon, Councilman, Mayor Pro Tem. My name is Carol Armstrong, and I'm very honored to represent Martin Army Community Hospital, Larry J. McCourt Hospital Commander, uh, our Colonel, um, Colonel Gloria Bonds, the Chief Nursing Officer, and our mission is simple, to maintain the readiness force of our nation. So, we serve diligently every day to make sure that our beneficiaries, including our soldiers, their families, veterans, and retirees, receive the care they deserve.
I didn't miss anyone, John. That's it? There you go. Here we go.
Yes, hello, I'm Cherie Stewart, and I'm a member of Nurses Inc., three years in, and I'm one of the young members that's going to be carrying the torch. Yes, I'm not retired, 20 years in as a nurse, and serving as a hospice consultant, and I love the hospice industry, and I love being a part of Nurses Inc. and helping those in the community.
That's what I'm talking about. Nurses rock. Nurses rock. Nurses rock. Nurses rock. Nurses rock.
Oh, ever so. They just need to be in their, uh, section of the year going to their seniors. Yeah, and it could be a two-year, just a longer, going into this song.
Our next proclamation will be by Councilor Mimi Woodson. This is Public Works Department Day.
Come on down, Molly. Come on down, everybody from Public Works. You don't want me to say your name?
Please come on up, everybody. Yeah, you got to come up front. Got to get my back.
We're going to wait on all of them. They ain't going to leave nobody behind. Thank you. Okay. Whereas the Public Works family in Columbus, Georgia, including employees, but not only from the Public Works Department, but also engineering, planning, extension, and codes, Columbus Water Works, and consultant partners. Whereas Public Works professionals focus on inner structure, facilities, and services that are vitally important to our substance of, of, oops, of our community and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Columbus, Georgia. Whereas the facilities and infrastructures, our services, could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of the Public Works professionals, who are engineers, managers, employees at all level of government and private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, solid waste system, public buildings, and other structures and facility essence to our citizens. Whereas it is in the public's interest for the citizens, civic leaders, children in Columbus, Georgia, to grant knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest in understanding the importance of Public Works and Public Work programs. They're represents our community. Whereas the year 2019 marks the 59th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Work Association, Canada Public Work Association. Now therefore, B.H. Skip Henderson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, to hereby proclaim the week of May 19th through the 25th, 2019, as, as National Public Works Week. Congratulations. Pat, before you say something, I just want to publicly say thank you to you and your staff. Lots of times, um, people don't realize that, um, Public Works plays a key, key, um, value in our lives every day, and sometimes people don't recognize that. Without your crew, your engineers, everyone that stands behind you, our city would not be as beautiful as it is today. And now it's growing each year, and all the innovative things you do to save our community. Um, there, in, in government, lots of times, we hear everything about public safety, which is okay, it's all right, but we also have other departments that are very key to the quality of life, and that is Parks and Rec and Public Works. Those are the two, um, departments that you usually don't hear about, but you play such an inherent role in our lives. And I want to say to you, your staff, and everyone that supports you, thank you.
the Public Works community, he and his staff, and Ali from Engineering. Rick Jones wanted to be here and had a family emergency, but he sends his best and said he would be proud to stand with us too. So, thank you all for your support, and I'd like to just recognize the team.
Thank you, and your honor. Thank you very much, Pat. And I'm so proud of both our teams, Public Works and also Engineering, working together and providing services for our community. Thank you so much. We appreciate it, everybody.
Thank you, Pat, for inviting me. Mayor Protim and Council, Columbus Water Works is also a proud partner with the city and always has been, always will be. And Pat and I have worked very close together. We actually had lunch again today. We were trying to have lunch about once a quarter, just to kind of catch up, so. But she has a great team and they do a lot of hard work. I'm very close and know a lot of them, so. But Columbus Water Works is proud to be standing here with Pat and with the city and your team, as much you call it, your team, so.
If I had a hat on, I'd certainly take my hat off to this group. You know, we have a lot of departments within this government, but this is the only department that touches every single citizen in this community. And others do a lot, but they do it all, and so we're just proud of them. And so, guys, my hat is off to you. Congratulations.
Mayor Protim, if I may, before these folks get away, I want to suggest that we do the next proclamation. Because the next proclamation is in honor of Pat Bigler.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm delighted to be able to read it. Whereas the number, as the number of women in Public Works, Engineering, and Construction Industry continues to grow, their contributions become clearer. And whereas in 2019, Engineering, Georgia Magazine recognized Patricia Bigler, along with 99 other women with their second annual list of 100 Most Influential Women in Georgia in the Engineering and Construction Arena. And whereas Patricia Bigler was also recognized in 2018 in the first published list of the 100 Most Influential Women. The list celebrates the diversity of female leaders, policymakers, and visionaries who have spent a good portion of their careers changing Georgia for the better. And whereas Patricia Bigler, Director of Public Works, has accomplished many things within the City of Columbus and the Public Works Department, to include receiving national accreditation from the American Public Works Association, finding innovative ways to extend the lives, life of our landfills, and creating successful leadership programs for Columbus field forces. And whereas Patricia Bigler's commitment and service to Columbus Consolidated Government and the Public Works Department is unwavering, the positive influence she has made continues to make our operations better each day. Now therefore, Skip Henderson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, May the 7th, 2019, as Patricia Bigler Day.
I will just say I'm humbled and remind everyone, it takes a team to make these things happen. I don't do that alone. And I haven't since the day I walked in the door. I take care of them as best I can and they take care of me as best they can. So. Shall we?
You're gonna send me the site?
I want to see if the website.
How you doing?
Good to see you.
Hey, gorgeous, beautiful.
Thank you.
Hey, how you doing?
Thank you. How are you? You have to stand there.
Oh. You beat somebody in a competition?
Congratulations. So, our next proclamation. We got Councilwoman Allen. Gloria Weston Smart Day.
I'd like to ask Gloria Weston Smart, already there? I was looking over there for you.
I didn't think I needed to sit down since I was already standing.
Don't you want to bring your entourage up?
Yes, I do. I would like for the Commissioners of Keep Columbus Beautiful to come up, and the, our nonprofit board, and my family, my extended family. I would like for all of you all to come up to be with me because this is a team effort. So we have here our Chairperson of Keep Columbus Beautiful, and that is William Kent, and our Vice Chairperson, who is Dr. Bridget Downs, and several Commissioners. And I also have a dear, dear friend, who is the Director of Student Services at Musco County School District, who's here with us, and several friends who had to leave because the program was just a little long and had some other things to do. But I'd like Julius, and come on up, John. John and Rose. John serves on the nonprofit board, and we are up underneath Department of Public Works, and so I work for Pat. And so, Pat, would you like to stand too?
I would.
Gloria, it's my privilege to publish this proclamation for you, and you're one of the hardest working individuals in the city, most enthusiastic I've ever been around. So I appreciate all you do, and it reads as follows. Whereas the Garden Club of Columbus, Georgia initiated the Seal of Honor in 1998 to recognize and show appreciation to individuals or entities which have helped the Garden Club of Georgia to achieve its mission of beautification, conservation, and education. Whereas Gloria Weston Smart, Executive Director of Keep Columbus Beautiful of the Public Works Department, received this year's Seal of Honor Award. She has worked diligently with the Garden Club of Georgia, Trees Columbus, and legislate, and the Legislature opposing tree cutting along lights of way on the interstates. And whereas Gloria Weston Smart is heavily involved in educating the citizens of Columbus with, about recycling and keeping our communities clean, she has been at the forefront of highly successful events such as Help the Hooch, and has been instrumental, probably one of the most instrumental folks in Columbus, in establishing the Environmental Court in Columbus, Georgia, that is dedicated to hearing cases concerning environmental issues. And whereas Gloria Weston Smart is recognized as a leader in many aspects of Columbus Consolidated Government and the community, Gloria Weston Smart has remained tactful in encouraging cooperation between all parties working to accomplish common goals. Her time, dedication, and perseverance deserve the highest recognition. Now therefore, our Mayor, Skip Henderson, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, May 7th, 2019, as Gloria Weston Smart Day.
Mayor Protim. Gloria's not afraid to go anyplace. When we started doing the drug margin, and we decided we were going to take Carver Heights there, and we started having meetings at the Pluett Center, educating the people in the community about different programs and stuff that was available to them. There were some areas down there that was on 60 Minutes, and a lot of people were afraid to go down on Bennett Avenue. But Gloria was not. She wasn't in anybody's house. As long as they would listen to her, she was like, Keep Columbus Beautiful. I just want to say thank you, Pat, you've done it for this community.
Thank you. Mayor Protim, we do appreciate that, that honor. And to our city manager, I want to say thank you too. We have really enjoyed the support of our local legislators, our state legislators, as well as the national ones. And I stand here to, I received an individual award, but it was from a team effort. And we could not have accomplished the things that we have and continue to accomplish things without the support of our board, and I'm so thankful for these people who are standing here behind us to give us that support. And family members, I appreciate them for being here. I want to say that I had an opportunity, or I have an opportunity, that I could only dream of. I thank God for giving me the opportunity to be a steward of what he created first, and that's our environment. So every day, I think of ways to try to make our individuals understand that we actually created pollution, and it's important for us to be the solution to the pollution that we've created, because we can't live without clean air, good water, and vegetation. And so, I love what I do. I want to thank Carmen Covasia and Stan Stovall for hiring me almost 20 years ago. And I wanted to take this job and do a good job, and we have worked in every sector of this community. So my office is out at the recycling center, but my work is out in the field. And I thank God for the opportunity and you all for the support. I want to say that Kevin Smiley always say that if you see a turtle on a fence, you know that he didn't get there by himself. So, and if you see a turtle crossing the road, to make it cross the road, he didn't get there by himself. So I've been crossing the road and trying to climb the fence, but I've had a lot of support to help me. And so we appreciate everything that we have done and everything that you all have done to make Columbus what it is. We've got a long way to go. All of the school support that we have, all the individuals, the businesses that support our efforts, we've had a wonderful time working with them and I want to continue to do what we can. I'm looking forward to retirement pretty soon, and so I want you all to know that I thank you for the opportunity to have worked with you all, and I pray that we will continue to do what we need to do to make Columbus a clean, safe place to live, work, and enjoy. Thank you.
I also would like to recognize Julie Bray in her absence. Julie served on our board, and a lot of our board members rotate on and off. We call them recycle Commissioners. They are appointed to two years and they'll stay for another two years, they go off for one year and they'll come back. Julie Bray actually recommended me for the State Award of the Garden Club of Georgia, and it was for working with Trees Columbus, fighting to make sure that we can keep the trees on our right of ways together. And I cannot not recognize the efforts that John Flannoy made with those beautification projects on our on and off ramps on I-185, and then the work that Sam Webborn did, and we worked together with three different counties for the scenic byways that starts at Williams Road and it goes all the way up to 85. And that means that that area will stay in its natural state. It won't ever be destroyed, and so we could not have done that without their help. I've had so many, many, many people who have worked hard with us to make sure that we stayed on task, and I just didn't want to overlook anyone. So thank you all for allowing me to come back. And, yes, and you know, let me tell you, we have board chair members and their wives and their husbands, and Karen Henderson served, have been serving on our board on and off, and she's not, she's not appointed to our board right now, but she serves on our nonprofit board, the Keep Columbus Georgia Beautiful Board, and she works very closely with William Kent and John Brant. They're the ones who are here from our nonprofit board. But Karen actually has been a wonderful asset to our program, and she continues, she knows that she can't go anywhere, so. We have Dr. Billy Kendall, who retired from the Musco County School District, and he's been with us ever since I have been here. He stays on the board and always chairs our annual awards luncheon, and we're looking forward to having that on the 9th of May, where we are going to recognize individuals, businesses, organizations, for their stewardship to our community and their support for Keep Columbus Beautiful. So we thank everybody for their efforts, and we're so happy that she's always able to whisper into our mayor's ear. Maybe sometimes we can get a lot of support and maybe not, but we do appreciate, we do appreciate her. So thank you again. Our next proclamation will be by Councilwoman Allen.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. I'd like to ask Daniel Holloway to come up and his support.
He's mentioned in this. Yeah, we want to, is Mike Sanders here too? Want to come up? He's not here? Okay. Well, he's mentioned in this, but wanted to try to get him into, included too. It's my privilege to publish this proclamation, Daniel, in your honor. Proud of your work, and it reads as follows. Whereas the American Public Works Association, originally chartered in the United States in 1937, whereas the American Public Works Association serves professionals in all aspects of public works, a fact that sets it apart from other organizations makes it effective, an effective voice of public works throughout North America. The APWA has a worldwide membership of more than 30,000. Whereas the American Public Works Association, Georgia Chapter, State Road EO, was state rodeo, it's not spelled rodeo, but rodeo, was held on Tuesday, February 12th, 2019 at the State Fairgrounds in Perry, Georgia. The chapter hosted two events, Backhoe and Street Sweeper. There were a total of 40 participants in the Backhoe competition and seven in the Street Sweeper competition. The events displayed the skills that are used in public works employees' daily routine. They are scored on a safety, time, and overall performance during the event. This is the second annual APWA Georgia Chapter Rodeo. And whereas Daniel Holloway placed second in the Backhoe competition, Daniel Holloway works for Rainwater Division in Public Works. And whereas Mike Sanders placed second in the Street Sweeper competition, Mike Sanders works for the Beautification Division in Public Works. Now therefore, Skip Henderson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, May 7th, 2019, as Daniel Holloway Day.
I just want to say thanks to everybody who made it possible. Our director, all the supervisors who, you know, we do a local one here in Columbus, and then top three get to go to state. Been here almost two years, my first time competing, and
So we have Dr. Billy Kendall, who retired from the Muscogee County School District, and he's been with us ever since I have been here. He stays on the Board and always chairs our annual awards luncheon. And we're looking forward to having that on the 9th of May, where we are going to recognize individuals, businesses, organizations for their stewardship to our community and their support for Keep Columbus Beautiful. So we thank everybody for their efforts. And we're so happy that she's always able to whisper into our Mayor's ear. Maybe sometimes we can get a lot of support and maybe not. But we do appreciate, we do appreciate her. So thank you again.
Our next proclamation by Councilor Allen.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Like to ask Daniel Holloway to come up and his support. He's mentioned in this. Yeah, we want to, is Mike Sanders here too? Want to come up? He's not here? Okay. Well, he's mentioned in this, but wanted to try to get him included too. It's my privilege to publish this proclamation, Daniel, in your honor. Proud of your work, and it reads as follows. Whereas the American Public Works Association, originally chartered in the United States in 1937, and whereas the American Public Works Association serves professionals in all aspects of public works, a fact that sets it apart from other organizations makes it an effective voice of public works throughout North America. The APWA has a worldwide membership of more than 30,000. Whereas the American Public Works Association, Georgia Chapter, State Road EO, was State Rodeo. It's not spelled rodeo, but Road EO was held on Tuesday, February 12, 2019, at the State Fairgrounds in Perry, Georgia. The Chapter hosted two events, Backhoe and Street Sweeper. There were a total of 40 participants in the Backhoe Competition and seven in the Street Sweeper Competition. The events displayed the skills that are used in public works employees' daily routine. They are scored on a safety, time, and overall performance during the event. This is the second annual APWA Georgia Chapter Rodeo. And whereas Daniel Holloway placed second in the Backhoe Competition, Daniel Holloway works for Rainwater Division in Public Works. And whereas Mike Sanders placed second in the Street Sweeper Competition, Mike Sanders works for the Beautification Division in Public Works. Now therefore, Skip Henderson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, May 7, 2019, as Daniel Holloway Day.
I just want to say thanks to everybody who made it possible. Our Director, all the Supervisors, who, you know, we do a local one here in Columbus, and then top three get to go to state. Been here almost two years, my first time competing. And Darnell Johnson, who finished first in state and nationals last year, was, who beat me this year? I don't think I did too bad.
Well, great job, and we look for great things from you in the future.
Thank you.
Our next proclamation by Councilor Allen is for Mr. Mike Sanders.
Is Mike Sanders here?
No, he's not here.
He's out in the mess. He's not here, we'll save it for the next one.
And our last proclamation to Councilor Charmaine Crapp, Public Works.
Okay, Public Works, get back up here. The Public Works Workplace Athlete Competition is an annual event organized by the Streets Division of Public Works, allowing employees to compete in a variety of challenges in a manner that mimics common workplace tasks with similar movements and body mechanics. The event displays the safety skills that are used in the Public Works employee daily routine, and individuals and teams are scored on safety knowledge, proper form, and overall performance during this event. This event primarily focuses on team building and safety while increasing the department's morale. And on April 24, 2019, Public Works held the fourth annual competition on the Public Works main campus. And James Walden of the Forestry Division won first place in the individual competition. B.J. Brannon of the Streets Division won second place in the individual competition. And James Floyd and Jack Owens, both from Forestry Division, won third place in the individual competition. And the forestry team won, consisting of James Floyd, Jabez Davis, Johnny Clark, Austin Lenander, Jarrett Lacy, and Jack Owens, won first place as team in this event. Now therefore, Skip Henderson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, May 7, as Public Works Workplace Athlete Competition Day.
About five years ago, the Risk Manager, Ann Marie and I, came up with the concept of a safety competition as opposed to speed and strength. And we wanted to see how well the guys were doing when it came to proper form, proper lifting, proper climbing, and all of those things. And I came, we put the idea together, handed it to Michelle in the Streets Division, and it took them a little while to figure out what I wanted. But once they did, they have created an event that is really, really looked forward to in Public Works. And each year, we make some changes. We identify safety areas' weaknesses and really make them think about it. So they come back trained the next year to make sure that they do it right. And obviously, with the number of people we have on the streets every day, the opportunity for injury can be really, really significant. We've got very good numbers, and the part of that is because we put this kind of effort and team building. But I'm proud to tell you, it is a really tight competition, and these guys are the best. So if I may have them introduce themselves, what place they took, and then we can go on around if you'd like. Oh, Michelle, you want to say anything?
No.
Okay. Okay, where's our first place winner? Individual first place winner.
James Walden in Forestry Division.
Second place.
B.J. Brannon, Street Division.
I'm Jack Owens, Forestry Division.
I'm Johnny Clark, Forestry Division.
And then our team, first place team, please come forward and introduce yourself.
Austin Lenander, Forestry.
Jarrett Lacy, Forestry.
Yeah, Johnny Clark from Forestry, one, the team, we had three different teams, but.
Forestry, Forestry, one, Team One.
Yeah, we were Team One.
Mine was the two people.
Now, please remember too, that these are the same guys who've been out cleaning up the north part of the town, these forestry guys, and have done it well. And we've done this over two months without any major injuries at all. Something to be very, very proud of. Time to go home.
Okay. Now we'll do resolutions. Your whole council, we hold a resolution for Robert Howard. Our next resolution, we have, it's Justin Campbell.
Justin Campbell.
And Rihanna Williams.
Mommy, you can come back here and take a picture. Y'all can come back here and take a picture.
Okay. What are we doing? We're taking a picture.
I'll take a picture after.
Whereas, no. Resolution, recognizing Justin Campbell, Rihanna Williams, placing second at the Future Business Leaders of America, the FDLA, State Leadership Conference in Atlanta, Georgia. Whereas Carver High School, FDLA partners with the Muscogee County Elections and Registrations Office every two years to serve as poll workers. And whereas this year, the partnership was taken to the next level with the help of the Elections Office, 46 eligible seniors, Generation Z, were registered so they could vote. And whereas with transportation assistance from Principal Christopher Lindsay and Partners in Education, 33 seniors voted early in midterm election. And whereas Justin Campbell. Excuse me. And whereas FDLA has a competitive event named Partnership with Business with the top six presented at the State Leadership Conference, and the top three presented at National Leadership Conference. And whereas, Justin Campbell, Rihanna Williams presented the project Shaping Our Future, and placed second at the state level, will present nationally in San Antonio this summer as a result of the Poll Worker Partnership with the Elections Office. Whereas the accomplishments of Carver High School students, Justin and Rihanna, are worthy of special recognition by this council. We hereby commend and congratulate Carver High School students, Justin and Rihanna, placing second at the Future Business Leaders of America State Leadership Conference. Columbus is proud of their efforts and accomplishments, and we wish them much success at the summer competition and in the future. And each one of you accomplished a resolution, I move this adoption.
Second.
Would you like to say something?
Hi, my name is Rihanna Williams, and I just wanted to say thank you for recognizing us and our hard work because this was a very tedious project. But, you know, we did the rest of we could to represent Columbus, Georgia, and put it on the map, and yeah.
We'd also like to thank Ms. Nancy Boran in the Elections Office for giving us the opportunity to work with them.
And certainly, I have to recognize Annette Williams with Carver High School. Annette and I have partnered together for 11 years to bring in young people to work elections. We could not do it without the assistance that we get from Carver High School and from Ms. Williams, who is taking pictures right here. If we ever need poll workers, we call Annette, and we say we need 20 poll workers, and she gets them to us. So we are never short on poll workers, and that partnership has been very beneficial. Very thankful for that each day.
Thank you. You're welcome. Congratulations again.
And Nessa, if you come forward.
I said I was going to preach. I've been here long enough, I feel like I should preach.
Last but not least, I always say the best are last.
Listen, if you want to come up here, you can come up here, stand on the line and get a better shot.
Will y'all come up here too? I'm sorry, Rihanna's mother is here also. She's been waiting.
Come on. Come on, Mama. Mama, I'm taking pictures, sending them to Nancy.
Okay.
Thank you.
A resolution, recognizing Muscogee County Elections and Registration, Executive Director Nessa Boran, on her recent appointment to the U.S. Election Assistance Commission, Standards Board, and Voluntary Voting Systems Guidelines Committee. That's a lot. Whereas Elections and Registration Executive Director Nessa Boran was appointed to be a member of the U.S. Elections Assistance Commission Standards Board on April 11, 2019. Whereas this board was served on the prestigious board along with Georgia Secretary of State, Bradford Rassensburg, Drew. And other election officials. And whereas she has also been appointed to the Voluntary Voting Systems Guidelines Committee to help implement specifications and requirements used to test voting machines, voting systems against required standards. Whereas factors examined under these tests will include basic functionality, accessibility, and security capabilities. Whereas all of these standards are required unless the American Vote Act of 2002. And whereas this appointment and other accomplishments of Elections and Registration Executive Director Nessa Boran are worthy of special recognition by this council. And therefore, the Council of Columbus, Georgia, hereby resolves. Hereby command, hereby commend, and congratulate Muscogee County Elections and Registration Executive Director Nessa Boran on her recent appointment to the U.S. Elections Assistance Commission Standards Board and Voluntary Voting Systems Guidelines Committee. Columbus is proud of her accomplishments and wish her continued success in the future. And I move this adoption. All those in favor, please stand.
I appreciate that. I hope to continue representing Columbus and of course, the state of Georgia on this commission. There are two people per state, so I feel honored to serve and hope that I can contribute information. Thank you.
Congratulations. I sent you pictures.
Thanks.
To your phone.
So you and the Secretary of State.
Help Americans Vote Act requires to appoint you per state to opposite parties. So I'm the Democratic representative, he's the Republican representative. Since we don't register by party.
Yeah, that's a great art. Thank you. Might be sending you duplicate pictures for.
That was the last one.
Second.
I'll put a second. And we adjourn. Good night.
Good night.